I'd like to open the closed session meeting of July twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. It is seventeen hundred or seventeen hundred hours, which also means five o'clock P M. Will the city clerk, uh, city clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Garner?
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe?
Here.
Councilmember Venable?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Duncan?
Here.
Mayor Beaver?
I am here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment for the closed session?
No comments.
Thank you. At this time, we will then move into closed session. It's still five P M.
Good evening. I'd like to open the regular City Council Successor Agency and Housing Authority Meeting of July 24, 2023. The time is 6:04 PM, and I apologize for the late start. At this time, I would ask that Rhylan Fernandez, please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you please call or roll?
Councilmember Garner.
Here.
Councilmember Thorpe.
Here.
Councilmember Venable.
Here.
Mayor Protem Duncan.
Here.
Mayor Bieber.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
No changes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney, can you please report out of closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no reportable action at a closed session today.
Thank you. Now moving to public comment. If there's anybody who wish to speak during public comment, there's public speaker slips in the back of the room. Please read the name. I'm sorry, please, when you get to the podium, make sure to say your name and your address, and you have three minutes to speak. The first speaker is Joan Baskovich, Baskovich, followed by Dr. Hanson Wong.
I'm Joan Baskovich, 34989 Avenue C. I'm here this evening to give you a two-minute, fifty-four tour of the library. When you walk in, turn to the right and view the children's section. You'll see that the shelves are packed with books. There are even books on top of books. There are even books on top of the shelves. There are currently one thousand, one hundred seventeen kids enrolled in the summer reading program. We need more space to display all that's available to them. Now, there's an open space in the children's park, and that's where summer programs are held. There were six different programs this summer, each one offered twice. The average attendance at each program was at least two hundred fifty kids and adults. The kids were set like this, crammed on the floor. The adults either had, there were a few available chairs, most of them had to stand. We need more space. Next, check out the book nook across from the main desk. This is where donated materials played for sale. Additional items are on the shelves in the back hallway, and then there's a shed behind the library for the rest of the donated material. We need more room. Now, walk into the adult section and check out the study rooms and the tutoring rooms. Oh, wait, we have none. When I lived in Lake County, Indiana, home of Gary and the steel mills, both the main library and my branch had these rooms. This is where I tutored adults wanting to learn a GED, wanting to earn a GED. They were comfortable working here because the rest of the library didn't see their lack of skills. We need these rooms. Now, if you're really brave, step into the men's bathroom. I hear it's quite an adventure. And if you want my opinion, the ladies' facility at the soccer field, whoops, is nicer than the one at the library. So, yes, we have a library, but it's inadequate in so many ways. So my question is this: Are you comfortable being the administration that could not find a way to supplement a gift of free land from the school district and nine million dollars from the state to build this community, the library it needs and deserves? Ucaipa is advertised as the jewel of the inland empire. This library is no jewel. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Hanson Wong, followed by Mrs. Candy Cansler.
Good evening. Hanson Wong, 35150 Court Street, Ucaipa, California. Welcome back to a meeting after a month off. So I want to commend some people tonight. Councilman Venable, he's come to meetings of multiple committees and encourage Councilman Venable, he's come to meetings of multiple committees and encourage interaction between the committees to work together for the betterment of the city. And his presence as well as his recommendations and encouragement, I think is something that is of value to our city and to our different committees. In addition, Christine Muller also does the same thing. She comes to multiple committees, she's given time and effort to encourage them. I saw her at the Youth Advisory Committee, urging them to think about things they can do and the type of things that they wanted to do and encourage them, encourage them to bring a new generation in when this one goes off to college and wherever else they might be going. So I think it's important for any of the citizens of the city, as well as council members, to help us consolidate, integrate these committees and have them work together. Make a Difference Day is coming up. Hopefully, all of you will help with that as well. So those are my good points for today. Now comes the hammer. No, not exactly. So, you know, in light of our quotes budgetary deficit and the things we're worried about, and additions to funding in multiple areas that I see on our agenda, I am curious whether we will have either our finance person or our city manager describe where it is then going to come from. Is it going to deplete any of the funds from any of the departments that might lead us to lower expectations? In addition, in what I see in the closed session in item B, it sounds like we're determining a price in terms of payment for something. Whatever that something is, again, where's the money coming from? What is there of this? And I don't see that this is an HR problem or a problem with holding the privacy of a child or whatever. And so maybe in the future, we'll have a transparency on what this item is, how we're going to pay for it, how it will help the city, the city council, as well as the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Candy Cansler, followed by Mr. Richard Frost.
Candy Cansler, 37687 Oakland Road, Oakland. I'm here tonight, I want to thank the city for working with me to try to put together this bear safety event. Joe Perdetto has worked hand-in-hand with me. We've got Fish and Wildlife, Kevin Howells, who are biologists, who's going to come and speak, plus I believe he's promised some wardens there. The Sheriff's Department will be there and the Fire Department. We're hoping to get a representative from BRTAC, which is very important because one of the issues with the bears all the way down in the city where people aren't used to seeing them are the security of the trash cans, which are the lure for the bears. A lot of people have said, get the trash-resistant cans. They're not that easy to get and we need somebody from BRTAC there to explain that and why and how much the cost will be. Because I have a feeling this is going to be the new normal and the bear safety event is going to be something that I'm hoping is going to inform the city how to deal with the bears, how to live with the bears, coexist. I've been in Oakland since nineteen eighty-one and I coexist with bears, mountain lions, bobcats, all of it. I love it. I love the wildlife. I haven't had any horrible issues, but the city people aren't used to that. So I'm hoping that this, Joe put this out for us, they're on the back. If anybody could pick them up, spread the word. I'm going to be hitting Facebook again here with all kinds of notices. And I hope we have a standing room only and I hope it serves its purpose. And I thank the city and Joe for everybody working with me on it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Candy, also, I want to thank, whenever there's a whenever there's a concerned citizen in our community that comes across some, all manner of injured wildlife, you are our city's wildlife empress and I can't thank you enough. The peace of mind it gives our community knowing that there's somebody here that hands what to do. All too often, I deal with fishing game and sometimes they're extended ETA if they're even going to respond at all. So what you do is sometimes unthanked and so from the bottom of my heart, thank you for willing to do that and help our we do live in the wildlife corridor and that's something that we cherish in Yucaipa. And so thank you so much from the city council or certainly from me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now you could clap.
Mr. Richard Frost, followed by Mrs. Christine Muller.
Richard Frost, 12731 Third Street, Yucaipa. This seems kind of minor, but the OmniGo bus, the buses, they have these straps on the top part. They slide so that they can fit more people in the bus, which they're good at doing. But whenever you put the fare in, it hits you in the back of the head. It's very light, you know, but it's kind of nothing should hit you in the back of the head when it's, you know, even though a light strap. And that they should fix them or something, at least at the front, so that when you're paying your fare, you're not hit by that strap. If you're five foot five, it's not going to probably affect you much, but it's just kind of irritating that Omni is I don't think you mentioned it before, but every time I pay my fare, whenever I take the bus, you know, that hits me in the back of the head, the strap there, so it's
Is this on regular city buses or is it the
Not on the big buses, the small, the OmniGo, little OmniGo, it's the little transit.
Understood.
I think three, three fifteen or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm going to give your speaker slip to Mayor Protem, who sits on our OmniBoard Committee. I'm going to have him bring that up at their next meeting so that they're aware of it.
Okay, thanks. All I have to do
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much, sir. Ms. Christine Muller, followed by Ms. Tina Richard Galvez.
Hi, thank you so much for hearing me, Christine Muller, Fawn Ridge Place here in Yucaipa. I have to tell you, it's kind of humbling to be and hear people talk about me like that. It's absolutely my pleasure to sit on these committees for so many years. And if anybody hasn't sat on the Youth Advisory or attended it, it's inspiring, to say the least. We have eight cities, one high school. Everybody's active in the community with sports and athletics and stuff. It's a beautiful thing. It really is. But I'm here to talk about transparency. I'm talking, here to talk about the item number two on closed agenda. Been sitting on the trails and open space for probably twenty-something years. And, you know, some of the trails and parks and things like that has been things that we've been working on for years, 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 years. The mountain bike track, we're on phase three now, took over eight years to get there. The Eldorado, the Five Winds Ranch, years in the making. So when we're talking about transparency and item number B on it shows an APN number, why don't they show an address? Why don't they show where it is? Because that particular property is eighty acres in the AVA and it's just west of the Five Winds Ranch. And the way that it is written, it says that the city is in negotiation and we have our negotiator over here negotiating for eighty, it says price and payment terms. I'm not going to hypothicate what that means, but I'm not sure I like what that means. We're not in the business of buying land. We don't buy things like that. We do eminent domain to make roundabouts and things for our city. So, you know, for those of you who don't know, the Trails and Open Space Committee has different projects going on. We have the Take a Hikes. We buy the granola bars and waters and things like that. We supplement that. We're very happy to do it. Our budget was cut because of the budget, you know, whatever's going on. And, you know, the elephant in the room, we don't need to buy eighty acres in the AVA. You know, we knew that it was listed for sale for six million dollars and it didn't sell. And so we're not in that business. We don't belong in that business. There are other projects that are going on in the city that we're trying to raise money for. And we're, you know, this Mount, well, you're going to hear about it at the Five Winds Ranch, you know, completing the Five Winds Ranch. All these things that benefit a hundred percent of Yucaipa is the stuff that we should be funding. Today, when you look at your agenda, they're asking you to approve millions of dollars worth of things, okay? And we did that when you convened last time, just asking you to be very conservative.
Thank you, ma'am. This is Tina and Richard Galvez.
We are Richard and Tina Galvez from 33033 Avenue D here in Yucaipa. I have lived here in Yucaipa for thirty-plus years. Now, I'm a disabled United States Marine Corps veteran. It's kind of a shame that I'm here on this issue, being drug out for so many years, since two thousand and fourteen. So I'm going to say hello to Yucaipa residents and citizens of Yucaipa and also the city council. I've been here many, many years on this situation. You know, I really don't know why I am doing this again. Dealing with the city of Yucaipa over a patio roof that was built in nineteen seventy. Over the years, it has dilapidated, had a leak. I fixed the leak. That was leaking back, I think back in nineteen, in twenty, twenty, in twenty fourteen. I have been harassed by the city and the code enforcement with over two hundred letters right here. I'm tired of this. We've owned, we've owned this house for years and when things dilapitate, people are supposed to fix their houses. The American dream is to own your own house and fix your own stuff if you know how to do it. I do know how to do it. I was taught in the Marine Corps how to do things like this. My father taught me also. I think the first roof I was up on, I was probably eight years old, helping my father. I have probably helped repair many, many houses and roofs over the years. The city has, has seen pictures, I've taken things over to the staff, such as Fermine and also building and safety before. They have seen pictures from way back at teen. The patio roof has been fixed many years. I just went through this whole winter of rain, not a leak one. One roof on the, one layer of roofing on the, on the house. When I took on fixing it, there was nine layers of roofing. Why? Code was only three. Also gave the city of Yucaipa a copy of the original nineteen seventy assessor's office and the San Bernardino County Building of Land Use paperwork that I have here and they also have it on file that this was permitted. Pamela, I think her name is Swarstik, Swarstik, tries to say that I enclosed the patio. I only replaced what was rotted, any plywood that was rotted and put down any new rolled roofing that was needed and flashed it to the house correctly. I have made the city council aware of this problem a few different times. I hope that this would be taken care of or I would be seen by a friend named, a gentleman from the city council, his name is David. I have his card here also that he left at my house. The next day, I called and left him a message. It took over two weeks before I was responded by him.
Thank you, sir.
But I think this needs to be taken care of.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Galvez.
How long have I been coming to you? Since February, right?
I appreciate your comments and we're prepared to respond, but I'm going to have you step away from the podium before we do that. Because your public comment time is over. Chair of Development Services and our City Engineer, Mr. Fermine Preciado.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor. His staff has met with Mr. Galvez on a couple of occasions and our building official has made several attempts. The property owner there at the home to explain what the process is and our building official is in the back of the room, so perhaps before Mr. Galvez leaves, he can speak with our building official. And we'll follow up on that.
Mr. Joel McCabe, followed by Mrs. Amy, Mrs. Amy Simmons, please.
For Avenue, council members. When controversial decisions are being made and a recall is underway, this city council is not communicating effectively with its citizens. Many questions have been asked of you regarding specific actions and decisions made. And for the most part, the only response we have received was emotional outbursts from both Mr. Duncan and Mr. Beaver. Concerned citizens of Yucaipa are looking for truth, transparency, accountability and clarity on the current city. Some potential reasons for public loss of trust could include lack of transparency. Citizens expect transparency from their elected officials when decisions are being made behind closed doors or without adequate public dis- it can raise suspicion and erode trust. Conflict of interest. If city council members engage in activities that benefit themselves or other associates at the expense of the public interest, it can raise serious ethical concerns. Misuse of power, abuse such as using public resources for personal gain or manipulating decision-making processes can, can lead to accusations of corruption and unethical behavior, nepotism and cronyism. When council members prioritize friends or families for job opportunities or contracts over more qualified candidates, it can be seen as an ethical breach. Unethical lobbying. If there are suspicions that special interest groups or lobbyists exert influence over the council's decisions, citizens may request the council's independence and integrity. In response to such situations, the concerned citizens deserve greater accountability and transparency from this city council. Ultimately, the credibility of this city council and its members heavily relies on their ability to act in the best interest of the public and to maintain ethical standards. When these standards are compromised, it can have significant consequences for public trust and legitimate legitimacy of the council's decisions. I have four questions I would like you to consider in regards to this. Why has there been a lack of communication with the citizens during the recall process? Number two, what specific steps is the city counting to address the concerns raised by these citizens? Number three, are there any plans to hold public meetings or town halls to address citizen concerns directly? And four, can the city council provide a platform or channel for citizens to submit questions and receive timely responses? One example of a simple action that could be Mr. Beaver, Mr. Duncan, Mr. Garner, hold individual town hall meetings to address the recall allegations and your logic behind your approvals with controversy, controversial projects. This would give you a chance to interact with your citizens of your district. If you have nothing to hide, this should be a very easy thing to do. Please consider my town hall request.
Ms. Amy Simmons, followed by Ms. Denise Work.
Hi, Amy Simmons, County Line Road, Yucaipa. I was checking over the agenda for tonight's meeting and I was noticing item B on the closed session. And I thought, hmm, the county, the city is looking at buying, probably looked that up. But then I realized that the APN is not a thirteen-digit APN, which is what a standard APN is. So I just to your attention, if you're going to use an APN, please use a legal APN on your agendas. And so I moved on and I wanted to just say that the city seems to have moved on from wanting to acquire matching funds for this nine million dollar grant along with a commitment from the County of San Bernardino to provide funds and from the school district to provide land for a new library. And so I want to say that it would be irresponsible of this council to pass by this opportunity. I have been on Facebook with the library and with myself and talking about this issue. And someone who raised three children in this town made the comment, and here's some Mertens. It says restricting funds for a library has a pretty specific message. It's as if by underfunding such a city pillar that it would stop reading and learning. This leaves Yucaipa looking backward. Now, I know you're, you're beefing up public safety funding and it's needed. A very difficult time we're living in, but let's water the roots. Let's take care of our children. Let's support our schools. Let's support knowledge and let's provide public spaces that are safe for communities to gather. You've done a great job with the parks, with the recreation. I know, but our You've done a great job with the parks, with the recreation, I know, but our library has been overlooked long enough. Thank you.
Ms. Simmons. Ms. Simmons. Free to hear me when there's applause, but, real quick, have we abandoned seeking out additional funding? I thought last time, I admit, I missed the last meeting in July, but I thought last we spoke about this, we weren't, we hadn't abandoned, we were working collaboratively with the county, the CEO paid more interest in assisting in the process. I don't think, I don't think the library's off the table, am I wrong?
No, you're correct, sir. It's an ongoing topic. As we've discussed before, and as I discussed with the Friends of the Library Group, this is a difficult challenge for the city. It is fantastic that we ordered a $9 million grant from the state, it is a matching grant, and we have a library project committed to cost us about $25 million. So while we certainly don't want to turn our back away from a $9 million grant, we have to figure out where the rest of the money's coming from. And it's, again, fantastic to the school district to host the project on their property. We don't really need land, we have available land that the city could use, but I think partnership and a great synergy at that property. But again, we have a huge gap for this project. We've had ongoing discussions with the county and the school district. We're trying to fit the pieces of the public to make this happen, but frankly, that $9 million grant was sought and received without a funding plan for this project. Nobody knows where the rest of the money was supposed to come from. And so we're working on that, but it's a challenge. Part of the challenge is that this grant money comes with a timeline. It has to be, not just spent, but the library has to be operational by March of 2020, which gives us a short timeline to figure out where the rest of the money's coming from and get the project built. Now, it is possible that we could get extensions of time from the state. We would have to request that and would likely, would likely be approved. But I abandoned the idea, we're having ongoing discussions, we've had multiple rounds of discussions over the last month, month and a half, with the county and with the school district, and we have those discussions.
Thank you. Ms. Simmons, we are, let me rephrase, through committees, this council, individual councilmen are working collaboratively with the school district to find creative ways to provide, you said something that I thought was really deep, let's water the roots, right? Let's not look at what we can gain from it, but, you know, if we were worried about us not experiencing the shade of a tree plant today, then our kids would have no shade tomorrow, and that's, I think, pretty thoughtful. And we are working with the school district, and my question, have you and your group also sought out more of an investment from the school district perspective?
No.
And forgive my ignorance, I'm not, the school district is a beast all of itself, and I communicate with several school district members, but I'm just curious to know if that's something you-
We're not in the business for raising funds. Now, if you would want to encourage us to look for additional grants, we have reached out to Cali Brinks and to actually, to do outreach promoting the library in the school district and use of the library, but as far as for raising money, no.
That's not, I meant more letting them know that they also work for you as well.
Right.
And this council is, you've given us direction, maybe they can have some direction.
I've written letters to every school board member, to every principal and everyone in this town. I haven't had one response to any letter I've written, but I'm not backing down.
So, good. I don't know what the answer is. I'm committed to having a library, and I think there's phenomenal facilities that I go around to for training through my profession. I think there is opportunity, as our first public speaker, Docovich, said, there's tremendous opportunity in a library. I'm not backing down from it. I don't know if that means trying to save now and use that money to, I don't know if that even is the answer, but I'm, for me, everything's on the table.
I don't know if I'm allowed to-
You certainly are.
Just a brief, in my conversations over time with Shane Masood, I said, "If you down-spec the library," well, we don't want to underbuild a library and outgrow it right away. Okay, but let's break it down. You're talking, they're going over the base per foot cost, was it $1,000 a foot, somewhere in there, to build a library. So can you down-spec it? Can you put off part of it? And, you know, our Friends of the Library Group says, "What a battling the building we have now, we're halfway there then." Well, then, that would mean scrapping the grant right there and starting fresh and trying to find, but when I drive up, I just dropped off some papers on my way over here, and I drive up to where we're supposed to park, library, and the curb is painted red that says "Fire lanes," and everyone's parked for years. The city needs to pay attention just to the, it wouldn't cost a lot to have a little more-
At the risk of dabbling into a public hearing on the matter, I don't want to get too far into it.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, it's not you, I opened the door. You have my commitment, I don't want to speak for the other men on the dais, but you have my commitment, I'm not giving up on the library, I think it is good. The conversation has been had about phasing the project and see if we can find a creative way to do that. I like getting a win on the state, because I don't like the state, so if we can find a creative way to pull a fast one, I'm all for it. Don't give up on us, we're not gonna give up on you either, I'm gonna keep fighting for it to the extent I'm able to, ma'am.
I appreciate that, Mayor Beaver.
Thank you. Ms. Denise Work.
Good evening, gentlemen. Denise Work, 37202 Lime Kiln Drive. To quote Chip O'Neill, once upon a time, "All paths local, but I believe Ucaipa is a microcosm of what is happening in our country. We see the weaponism of Department of Justice and to silence those that disagree with an administration, and try to shed light on their allegations. In Ucaipa, the City Council and administration has weaponized the city clerk to try and silence and intimidate citizens and proponents of a recall, because they agree with City Council. I don't know who gave the city much power. I understand it's her right to do that, but it's not her right, or even her, I don't think, ability to hire an attorney from LA and use our money to do that. And you guys are trying to do this, and you hired these guys in the middle of the night, and you're responsible. So now you try to rationalize because you think you can do a thing, that doesn't mean good. And like Jason Aldean said, "Try that in town." So these people stood up and said, "No, not in my town. You hired this administration at night, and you can fix it." Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to consent. The consent agenda, Items 1 through 14. Is there any member of the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
Remove approval of all the consent agenda items.
We have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, and a second by Councilman Benable. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Mayor and council member business reports? Any member of the council that has any business to report?
I'd just like to say that, at the end of this meeting, I would like to, and this is not now, but I don't know who all has heard about this, but there was an accident on Sunday night, Sunday morning early, and a young lady lost her life. And I close this meeting tonight in honor of Maddie Ramison, the owner of the Pumpkin Patch. She lost her life in an accident at the Pumpkin Patch on Sunday night, or Sunday morning, early Sunday morning, a tragic accident, and I spoke to the family today, and I have permission to say this and do this, but I have to close this meeting in honor of her, if that's at all possible.
Indeed, thank you, sir. Any other business to report?
Make a difference. I really want to push, make a difference, if we can get everybody out there, Grant and Sheriff, if we can get as many people as we can get out there to support us, you know, and support our city, a great way to see that. And if you ever get a chance to come to Youth Advisory, you gotta do it. The energy there is amazing. Mr. Wong, am I not correct? So, make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to department reports. First item up is Item 15. This is going to be the levy of special taxes within Community Facilities District number 98-1, and the presenter, Director of Finance, Mr. Philip White.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Item 15 is the levy of special taxes with CFD 91. Bear with me as I try the needle. Perfect, all right. This is the levy of taxes for Chapman Heights. So this is an annual levy that's required, approval of resolution, so our recommendation is to adopt Resolution number 23-37, authorizing the levy of special taxes within Chapman Heights. Chapman Heights, the district was formed to finance the streets, utilities, parks, landscaping in Chapman Heights. There were three different issuances of debt totaling $30 million. The city acts in a fiduciary capacity, this is not the city's debt, but we do act in fiduciary capacity to administer the debt repayment associated with the CFD. The debt is repaid solely from special taxes, from these annual levies that you authorize. The assessment is sent to the county, who adds it to the tax roll. The current balance is currently about $50 left on that original $30 million debt, and the final payment is, will be made in fiscal year 2031. So there's an annual calculation that's performed that suggests the annual levy. This particular year, there were additional earnings that were rolled into that calculation, so the annual levy is a 9.5% decrease from last year's levy. So those property owners, when they see their amount that's paid each year, it will be 9.5% less than it was last year, which is unique and cool. One other thing to note is, we actually had a expert meeting today about refinancing that debt, not extending the final payment, but brief that debt to a lower interest rate that would, those property owners would recognize additional things over the last seven or eight years that's left on that debt. At this point, the preliminary projection would be $160 a parcel each year, further reduction from that 9.5% decrease this year, but that is in the works, more will be coming your way on that in either September or October. That concludes my presentation of the, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. It's a great presentation, so it's a rare honor, the City Council gets to have an opportunity to lower or reduce taxes. It's probably a situation where the higher-ups are helping the taxpayer. Any questions of our finance, is there a motion to approve lowering taxes, or do you guys want to not do that?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Real quick, before I vote, I rent a property in Chapman Heights. Am I obligated to not vote on this matter?
So if you have an interest in realty that is different than a member of the public generally, when we're talking Chapman Heights, one of the things that discussed with staff was Chapman Heights is so big and comprises property in the city, that we didn't feel that there was a conflict of interest with the City Council proceeding on this one. However, if you wanted to avoid the appearance of an impropriety, you're free to announce that.
So, out of abundance of caution, I don't own property in Chapman Heights, but I do rent, I think my rent is comprised of monies, so I'm going to recuse myself from this vote, I'm gonna leave the dais for the vote, apologize I didn't catch that sooner. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
I got you, yeah. Okay, do I have a first and a second so far?
Yeah, you did.
So I have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That item passed a zero with Mr. Beaver recusing himself.
All right, moving on to Item Number 16. This is July Celebration and Fireworks Spectacular Wrap-Up Report. Mr. Mary Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The annual 4th of July Celebration and Fireworks Spectacular took place at Ucaipa High School on Tuesday, July 4th, from 2 to 9 o'clock PM. An estimated 500 people attended the event. Live entertainment included a DJ named DJ Dave, a special from council, as well as a performance by Surf City All-Stars. Six food vendors and 17 merchandise vendors filled the sidelines of the soccer field and were very, very happy with the event turnout. Some of our activities included bracelet making, a water balloon toss, and a cornhole tournament. New to the event this year was the Kid Zone. It was a huge hit, it included eight jumpers, as well as a 75-foot zip line. And finally, of course, fireworks show began promptly at 9 o'clock and lasted for about 20 minutes, and we had a lot of really, really great feedback, not only in, but on social media as well. The event generated revenues of $1,273 and expenses of $70,530. In addition, the Ucaipa Police Department and Fire Department's worked hard to help reduce the use of illegal fireworks and made one arrest. I'd like to introduce Captain Walker to tell you more about their efforts.
Thank you, Mary. Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. So, 4th of July, like it is always, was very busy. At this event in particular, we had 13 sworn persons catered to this event to handle security and safety for the attendees, the traffic in and around the high school and the surrounding neighborhoods. We also had patrol shifts staffed, as well as a couple of extra deputies doing enhanced patrol. Notable case, the arrest that Mary talked about, we were monitoring social media, and we were, a call for service from a concerned citizen whose neighbor in the Chapman Heights area was posting to social media in possession of a very large quantity of illegal fireworks. So our Met Team jumped at, they did all the research, wrote a search warrant, and responded to the house. Unfortunately, that's on, but we were able to get him to come back to the house at that time, the fire was on, but we did recover an illegal firearm that he was in possession of. So, on all work by our folks there that day, 4th of July to July 5th, the wee hours of, early morning hours of July 5th, we had, right around 11:00 or 12:00 already, like I said, 150 calls for service, so quite a busy test, you know, makes it difficult to respond to all of those fireworks calls for service, as with all of our calls, they get prioritized, so we make an effort to get to there as promptly as, you know, it's just a busy time. Lieutenant Scoville and I have had talks about different approaches for next year, things maybe we could do better, and for this event, though, to get back on track, was really no issues, no arrests, no problems out of itself. Our biggest issue was traffic-related issues and the influx of people coming to the area on that fireworks time. So we'll work to address those and come up with some good plans, but we used that same traffic plan that we did graduation, we used that for 4th of July, and I believe 1,000 people who were in attendance, we got everyone, the mass of people out of there within about 20 minutes or so, so not a huge delay on our end, but overall, a successful night on our end.
All right, and that concludes my report, and we are available to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Mary, Captain Walker, we certainly do love our independence in Ucaipa. I was in attendance, it was very well put together, I heard raving reviews, the heat didn't stop us from getting out there and celebrating on our 4th of July as a community. There was far away, well, somebody was visiting, family members for the 4th of July from Maine, but they in Menifee and decided to come up to our fireworks show, so we're, in fact, that our 4th of July spectacular was out there, pays credit to your, and our community services department, so Megan Wolfe and Mary Dee, hats off to a phenomenal job. Is there any questions of council?
No, I don't have any, I just wanted to second what you were saying as well. You all did a very good job.
Outstanding. Is the receiving file? Perfect. Thank you so much for your great report. Moving on to Item Number 7, outstanding. Outstanding, absolutely. Number seventeen?
Excuse me, Mayor. Uh number seventeen, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. Uh Chris Star is a customer of mine.
Very well, we will wait for you to uh council chambers before we begin. Ms. Megan Wolf, the floor is yours for the special application in a farmer's market, that's.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening and good evening, Council. Uh city staff recently met with the owner of County Line Farmer's Market to disrelocating the market due to the construction on County Line and Street. Um the app, the owner then submitted an application for a special event permit to move the Farmer's Markaipa Community Park. This market would take place every Saturday, Thursdays, beginning in August twenty twenty-three. The permit would go until August twenty twenty-four. Activities included in the Farmer's Market would be live music, food vendors, merchandise vendors, and at nights, they and on Thursday nights, they would have a beer and wine garden. In addition, the applicant is requesting a code up from the city in the form of marketing as well as sup for logistics. If the application is approved, staff will continue to work applicant to ensure a successful Farmer's Market event takes place. Staff is re recommending that city approve the special event permit, approve the applicant's request for the city sponsorship, as well as approve a beer and wine garden at the Farmer's Market. This is my report, and I can answer any questions you may have at this.
Thank you, Megan. Question from council to.
Who's gonna be the beer and garden sponsor or participant?
At this time, talking with Hops and Spokes about um a special night out where Hops and Spokes promotes um local brewery, their local brewery, um but they're also interested in talk partners without throughout the community.
Outstanding. Yeah, I feel like we've we've had, we have support for a farmer's market. I think the location has always kind of struck us out. I I remember market nights on Fridays when I was growing, always a pretty big success, but I think our traffic plan on Ucaipa had something to do with that potentially. Um I foresee some good business on things. I think the kids are getting out of school and middle school, and so we may need to have uh potentially if we get a position, as like we've discussed in public safety, might need to spend some time at our our, you know, Farmer's Market, but I think this is gonna be the one that gets our Farmer's Market in town to stay and gets in the the business they need to um being here, so. If there's no further discussion, approve item number seventeen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
For a second?
I'll second.
A motion by Councilman Venable and Second Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries for with one uh recusal. Moving on to item number eighteen. This presented by our city attorney, Stephen Graham. Introduction and first reading of ordinance number two-five.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Um as a part of our review of city ordinances with particular emphasis on attempting to address quality of life issues throughout. Uh one of the items that staff and our office um was the number of hotels and motels operating without current zoning mechanisms like conditional use permit. Um and also the um general thing that we have a significant number of hotels and motels that are not rating to give housing to people who are here temporary uh for work, for recreation, or to visit. Uh but are instead being used as permanent uh contrary to our code. Um this result lack of uh temporary housing for those who need it, uh it results in decreased tax revenue because oftentimes, those in motels will stop collecting taxes um on those people who are within thirty days. Um and the truth is, when we eyes the hotels and motels that are operating without conditional use permit, that seem to be allowing people to stay long-term, they have certain numbers of calls for service, uh including calls for both law enforcement um and and for the fire department. So in working uh with city staff, Assistant City Attorney writer researched the issue, uh cities were doing in this arena to address this. Uh and we are proposing an amendment to the city's municipal um which will explicitly state uh that visuals uh that no hotel or motel shall rent a person for longer than thirty days. That's the point of a hotel motel for that transientsy. Um and then not uh to rent for thirty days in any one hundred and eighty-day period, and this is to address um loophole that exists uh when you adopt a thirty-day uh minimum stay, where they'll check you out for a day and then check you back in the next day, and you do a continuous series of stays um at the mills. When we are talking about um enforcement actions, we included the standard enforcement language, which has both civil enforcement straight citations, criminal enforcement. And ultimately, if we have hotels and motels that uh refuse to comply with the city's regulatory ordinance, that can be a grounds under the zoning code, provoking their legal non-conforming status and essentially requiring them uh to go through the zoning process all over again and analyze the nuisances that they're created, creating and uh potential conditions of approval. So city council made a really good address these quality of life issues. Uh we've been uh since I've run, managers arrived, talking with staff about some of the frustrations there. Um and this is one of them that I think is a pretty straight ordinance change that will allow um both city staffs, our law enforcement, uh significant additional tool to bring these potential nuisance activities uh in a.
Thank you, sir. Now, I certainly receive my fair share of emotions from some um frustrated residents that near uh two of the motels that I can think of in our city that find it basically have established residency, long-term residency in a supposed to be a motel. Um and that does bring with it a list of problems that I'm aware of in my wheelhouse, but I can only imagine the the burden it places on city staff as they work through, our code enforcement works through their their jobs, so. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Is there any questions to our staff?
They may have had some sort of went from their normal home, and they're now they're having to stay in a hotel out of their control for a longer amount of time, where they were flooded or.
That that's a that's a great council member. In fact, I can think, I believe there was a council neighboring jurisdiction who had a a fire and had to uh for a medium term while that was uh remediated. Uh there are longer-term stays, often what they're called, um housing opportunities available. Those ones are in the city of Redlands. Um these particular uses are designed for thirty days or less. Uh we're we're attempting to to get that under control. But you know, that being said, you know, there there is a a real opportu, I think, in the city of Ucaipa uh to have more opportunity for tourism uh and just for uh higher quality of transient housing. I know uh after my uh first born was born and we came to stay in Ucaipa uh for a long, great time to be close to family. Uh the short-term housing options in the community are very, very limited. We ended in another jurisdiction uh for that time period. And I know that that's something the council has taken great steps towards remedying. I know that we've have a a recent development, a great approval for a newer hotel. But to address your question about extended stay, my understanding is we don't have any extended stays in the city of Ucaipa, and perhaps that's an opportunity that some enterprising uh property owner in our community, listening to this meeting, will take it upon themselves uh look into.
I understand the purpose of this, and I like it, I think it's good. I so we have a new mo, a new hotel in our community now, so someplace from their home, and that was the place they decided to stay, they could go for thirty days, is that how I'm understanding it currently?
That's correct. And speaking when we're talking about housing that's designed for that extended stay, kitchen, uh it it's going to have additional uh that you don't typically find in hotels or motels, because they're not as a human habitation over a long period of time.
Appreciate the feedback, thank you.
Yeah, I got a question. Um who's gonna read that if it goes over thirty days?
Uh people who are mean will start. They'll be primarily tasked with it, uh but it will be a joint effort of multiple city departments, including.
Okay, so how you how you gonna regulate it? I mean, how is that gonna be done?
Uh I would, are are you talking about what the penalties uh, because I can.
Like if someone stays there for thirty-four days, four days over the thirty days?
So how I did it in the past in another jurisdiction having that problem, um we issued fine to the hotel. We're not gonna go after the person, for the hotel.
I think I think what it means is how are we gonna find out?
Yeah, they find this information out to the past thirty days.
That's a that's a good question. Um so uh there's a cut to find out. Uh one of the primary ways most cities use is they notice fluctuations in the transient occupancy tax. They're occupied, but the the taxes are not being collected. The reason the taxes aren't being is because under the Revenue Taxation Code, you cannot tax staying somewhere for longer than thirty days. Um we do have language in here regarding the records that hotels and motels are required to maintain. Now, our ability to collect is strained by constitutional requirements. We can't just stand and say, show me your papers. Uh we do have to have process in place, but it's a process that in many other communities throughout Southern California to facilitate that.
You'd be surprised at how many other tenants of these hotels be quick to call and complain that somebody has lived there for a long time. It happens quite often.
And oftentimes, we just, how long have you been here? I I've been here for three months, you know.
There's little, there's no liability on the tenant, well, and uh all the liabilities on the owner, who knows that they're required, I think we would make them aware uh that this is the now the law. You cannot rent in a long capacity, because we don't have any extended stay hotels in Ucaipa. And if that's if that's something that somebody wants to bring forward, and we have the input from our community that that's something the community wants, dabble down that road, but sometime long ago, at least two of motels were granted access to our city to do in a hotel or motel by by not an extended stay, as our city attorney said. And I think it it is a, you know, a way that we, the citizens, you lose out on um taxed all, or I think TOT, who who hasn't been frustrated when they book a vacation somewhere, and they're like, oh, it's it's only a hundred and eighty dollars a night, and then you get to checkout, and it's like four hundred dollars in the world, because TOTs are 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 high. And that's a way that collecting that tax revenue, if they were abiding by the law, but they 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 rent longer and then we'd lose out revenue. And then they don't pay property tax, because they're not, it's not so, it's just money that we don't capture. If I understand the code correctly, I think I do.
So paying the hotel tax fees to the city?
A great question for the finance department, uh but you know, my understa, in total and other things that I have done of these types of facilities, we think there are two sets of books. Uh there's a set that's there in case we should, there's the real set. Um so I think a lot of, no, uh they're they're not our taxes or fees. And and frankly, you know, the can some of these units are oftentimes pretty deplorable. Oftentimes, they are used for county voucher programs, have people who are some of the most vulnerable community, and they're being placed next to individual, may not be very good influences on them, and gets them back into lifestyle that they were trying to get out. So there's a lot of good reasons to look at ensuring that your hotels and motels are operating as as their intended use and not oper essentially as a poorly equipped apartment house.
So do these folks turn around and turn those into uh one-bedroom apartments? Do they apply for a CUP and convert it from the motel to apartment complex?
They're certainly welcome to planning application uh with the city. I have successfully actually worked on transitions of motels into permanent housing, uh usually for scene, usually you take two rooms, one room becomes the kitchen bathroom, uh the other room becomes like the single bedroom. Uh so that that is certainly possible, but that is not the intent of this ordinance, and that would be a decision of the property. I doubt it. I suspect what will happen is they will begin kicking people thirty days.
And I think to Councilman's comment, I'm almost positive that major hotel corporations like La Quinta, like Marriott, like um they don't rent for more than thirty days anyways, but and and with except maybe like Home Two Suites, where they actually have extended stay hotels, but I don't think the one that we just uh that just opened right even allows for more than thirty-day rentals per their corporation by.
The the law enforcement officials on the dais will distinction between tenants and innkeeper's privilege, so you know, typically, that's the reason for the the corporate policy, is they don't want people gaining tenancy rights in their hotels.
We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Duncan, is there a second? And a second by Councilman Thorpe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to us, are there uh any announcements that council has? I would like to, oh, sorry, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to to congratulate Christine for getting a um a mountain bike race coming, pretty soon to bring to to everybody and stuff. I mean, I think that we're moving in there. I've been uh pushing the the Redlands has their bike race, and now Ucaipa is getting ready to set theirs for a nice mountain bike race. Appreciate everybody, you know, that, and uh if we go on and get more people involved with the city uh community, uh it's it's just awesome. So I appreciate everything that you guys do, too.
It's been a few years since we uh Hops and Spokes, Trails and Open Spaces, Mountain Bikes, uh Celebration, but maybe this is a reason, cause to celebrate, so maybe we can see that again. I'll second what he said. Great work. You're you are certainly a pillar of the community. Mrs. Kent brought up a phenomenal uh point event, the bear information. My, when that bear's face in town, I kid you not, my fiance said, we need to go get it. That's up, and it's it's scared, because its momma got hit by a car, and I said, we're not bringing it. Bear stopped showing its face, she uh called me and said, what did you guys do to that bear? I swear, I received no report from the city manager. Ucaipa took action to rid ourselves of a bear. He's living a great life chasing squirrels up in the mountains. So please, for those who are listening and those who are in attendance, let's go to that event. We live to these uh wildlife, it's their home as much as it is ours with them. There's no erratic animals from our city, so let's work together. Um thank you to staff. Joe, I don't see you here, but thank you for, okay, thank you for working on that uh with her. We are stewards of the community, and if that's what people want, then by God, let's make it happen. And uh certainly, you've you've you're gonna work with people to bring those, bring that information to the forefront. Mr. McCabe, if you're still here, I heard you. I heard you here about a town hall. Standby for coming attractions. If there's no more announcements? No? Then I would uh. This, yeah, that's right, I did see this. I blame the city for this bear issue. It's clear the bear was headed north bench and got stuck in a roundabout, then headed back south. Perhaps some traffic clatter furry friends. It is my duty to adjourn this meeting in the name and memory of Maddie Ramison, and we will adjourn.